Good evening and welcome to the Chamber of Commerce, Chamber, the City Council Forum. Seat one, we have all the candidates here. We're going to have them do their opening statements. I'll have two minutes of opening statement with no rebuttal. And then we'll go to questions. And they'll have a two-minute response time for their question with a one-minute rebuttal. And with that, we'll turn it over to the people that you really came to see.
Good evening. My name is Joe Martinez. I am currently running for the City Council, seat number one. I hope not to go over on my time, so please. I am here today, running for a seat that I think is very important. We've had great growth in the city of Caldwell. I'm here just to add to that, looking at infrastructure. And as we all want a better city, growth, economy. I'm looking at, you know, trying to help the community with educational systems, safeties, issues, concerns, community awareness, those types of things. Of course, the big question on everybody's mind is, of course, taxes. How do we keep it down? What I'm trying to bring to the table is refresh energy, revive, build on what we've been doing with the city of Caldwell for the last fifteen, twenty years. I've been here the majority of my life. My kids were raised here. This is something I feel very strongly about, and that our community, once we come together and we put it all together, will be better in every aspect. That's my goal and my expectations. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Mike Pollard. I am the incumbent in seat number one. I've been on Caldwell City Council since 2012, when I was appointed by Mayor Nankolis to fill the vacated seat of former mayor and former councilman Jim Dakin. My wife and I live here in Caldwell. We moved here in 2004 from that horrible state that everybody talks about. We've been married for forty-eight years. We have a daughter who lives in Florida with our son-in-law, our two grandchildren, and as of two weeks ago, our great-grandbaby. So I'm a graduate of Pepperdine, which at that time was in Los Angeles. Didn't have the beautiful campuses it has now in Malibu. I have been working on council to do my best to represent the citizens of this city. I have volunteered in many different organizations. I'm proud to say that my name is on a bronze plaque on Indian Creek, because I was on the Indian Creek Design Committee. All the time I lived in that other state, I never got a bronze plaque, but I have one here. But it is my pleasure to serve the citizens, and I hope to be re-elected for another term. Thank you. Oh, by the way, if you don't know me, I have Parkinson's disease, so I'm not shaky. Just because I'm scared, I'm shaky, because this is what I do twenty-four-seven.
Hello, good evening, I'm Brad Doty. I'm running for seat one. First, I'd like to thank the chamber. We appreciate it for hosting the event. It's much appreciated. So, you know, Caldwell's a great place to live. I'm a father of four, and I'm proud to live in Caldwell. I've been in service to the public since I was seventeen years old. I entered the military right outside of high school, went into the US Army before being hired as a deputy sheriff. In 1997, I joined the state police and I've been in service to the state ever since. During my time there, I have successfully risen to the rank of captain. I'm currently the bureau chief of alcohol beverage control. With my team, I manage a multimillion-dollar budget, as well as have led ABC into the online Twenty-First Century. Additionally, we manage about seven thousand licenses and permits each year. I'm a graduate of Northwestern University Police Staff in Command, and I currently serve on the Southwest District Health Citizens Review Panel for abandoned, abused, and neglected children. My top three priorities will be to make our police and fire whole, so that they do not continue to be a training ground for other agencies. We certainly remember how our city was in 2010. We are seeing an uptick with some crime-related activity, and we don't want our city to go back to how it was in 2010. Second, which everyone will probably talk about, is the reduction of property tax. Caldwell has a high property tax. So I think with the required focus on that, we were able to reduce the property tax within the budget. And then third, we want to keep moving Caldwell forward in a positive direction. And I think how we do that is by using our citizens that are untapped out there in the community. You know, I've served our country, I've served our state, I've served our county. It's now time to give back and serve my city. Thank you.
My name is Brett Slaughter, and I am running for Caldwell City Council, seat one. A lot of people ask the same question when you're running for a position, and that is, why are you running? And the answer comes from my heart and my soul. Nine months ago, I had a daughter born. And if you want your life to be put into perspective, have a kid, I want everything for her. And I know that as she grows up in Caldwell, the only way I can make sure that this is the best city possible for her to live in is to become more involved. And I'm grateful for that opportunity. I grew up in Oregon. I wasn't lucky enough to grow up in Caldwell or even Idaho. Caldwell by choice, not by chance. But when I was in Oregon, I learned from my grandparents. My grandparents were from Idaho. They taught me those values of hard work, faith, family, sacrifice. Those are values that I knew I wanted my community to be an example of. As I came to Caldwell, I've been very lucky to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission for about a year and a half now. I attended BYU Idaho and obtained a bachelor's in political science. I also went to law school at University of Idaho and recently graduated with a law degree. I have three specific priorities that I also want to make sure occur. Keep Caldwell Caldwell. Two, build public safety, and to make sure that Caldwell is business-friendly. With my experience owning a small business, I really believe that I can do that for this city. I'm grateful for this opportunity, and I look forward to having a conversation about the issues today.
Mike, you get the first question? While you're doing that, let me quickly get up to the... Due to the technical difficulties we had last night, I'm going to go ahead and read the question, and then I'll sit down and let the candidates go ahead and answer it. The first question comes from Barbara Moody. And her question is, what do you see as the top priorities for the city of Caldwell?
Thank you for the question, and that's an easy one for me, because it's something that I have focused on during budget hearings and everything else, and that's public safety. Mayor Nankolis, when he appointed me to the council, sat me down and he says, Mike, the most important thing that the city council does is oversee the safety of our citizens. We have shortage of police officers. If you were to ask our police chief, he would tell you that we are probably staffed where we were six or seven years ago. When we replace officers, it's because we lose them to other cities and we hire new officers. But we really haven't gotten any brand-new officers, if you understand what I'm trying to say. And the same is true for our fire department. We had that Dairy Gold fire the other day, and luckily, we had neighboring cities that had ladder trucks, because our ladder truck, we don't have staff to operate it. So my answer to you is, public safety is my most important concern for the city. Thank you.
Well, same for me. Police and fire are number one. It's all about citizen safety. And in fact, I'd like to thank those that have hung around long enough in our police force and our firefighters. That experience is invaluable to the city of Caldwell. I've had meetings with both fire and police. The police are down significantly in their numbers. It's into the longevity, so where you have sergeants on the street that have two and three years of experience. Not by fault of their own, not that they're any less capable. However, experience does pay for itself. So I think it certainly needs to be addressed, it needs to be made whole, and their wages need to come up to a comparable wage around the area. In addition to the police and fire, we have an uptick right now in gang activity in Caldwell. And some of you may be able to remember about twelve years ago, where we had to station police cars on every corner down where our beautiful plaza is today. So we certainly need to fund our police department, we need to get them fully staffed, we need to develop a plan, which it's the chief's plan. We don't, I don't normally like to give details as to how we're going to prevent criminals from committing crime. But you can do that with saturation patrols. You certainly just can't throw a number at it and say we need more police officers. They have to be specifically trained, and that experience goes a long way. With our fires, we all know, we just had one of our largest fires in quite some time. Again, meeting with the fire department, they also need to be made whole. And I think one way that we can do that is hopefully, when the urban renewal development comes to sunset here in the next year, hopefully, we can use some of those funds to help supplement that.
Thank you. I want to expand on the three priorities that I mentioned earlier. First, keep Caldwell Caldwell. And here's what I mean by that. To ensure that our values reflect who we are as a community. Caldwell can be known sometimes as a feeder city. What I mean by that is that Caldwell feeds into Boise, right? Our citizens work in Boise, they play in Boise. That doesn't have to be the case, and I'm grateful that we're transitioning over to our own independent city. And what's crucial about that is that everyone can live, work, play, all in Caldwell. We don't have to depend on the city of Boise for really much of anything. And we don't want to follow the example of Boise, because unfortunately, they're following the example of other cities like Portland, and we do not want to be Portland, and we don't want to be Boise, we want to be Caldwell. And the way we do that is to build that community of values that we have. Also, I mentioned public safety. There has been an uptick. I think everyone can notice that. What I really, truly believe is that as we increase those family values, that'll come down, but we also need to take it a step further and be more proactive. I would like the next mayor to commit a, or create a safety commission, and I would like to serve on that as a city councilman. Another thing that we must ensure that match our values is that Caldwell is incredibly business-friendly. We want people to know that our doors are open for business. I've had the opportunity to own a small business here in Caldwell. I have recently closed it after graduating law school, but that's how I survived going to law school. But what's important about that also, with that business experience, is that when somebody comes to me and says, I'm frustrated with the home occupation permit, I know what they're talking about. Thank you.
You know, listening to fellow candidates, I think we're all probably hitting on the same point of safety and security for our community. Living here twenty-seven years, raising my five children here in the city of Caldwell, being a part of the school districts and coaching and teaching and mentoring children, educating them on safety issues. I agree, law enforcement, first responders, fire, we need to come to a common ground with our infrastructure, so we can come to end the means, so we can get more police officers on staff, three shifts, more on night, more firefighters, so they're not working double, triple shifts, fatigue, mental stress. There's a lot of that factors that play into that. At the same time, knowing that as a resident of the city of Caldwell for over twenty-seven years, that I'm not trying to pay more taxes for my community, but at the same time, I want to protect what I have. You know, with what we have, the numbers for police officers and firemen, if there was two incidents at the same time, you better hope that you're the first person that called to the fire department, because very unlikely that the second structure is going to get put out. Me, as a resident, longtime resident of Caldwell, I want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity of their fire structure or the police department to respond to a call. So yes, my biggest concern would be safety to the community. Thank you very much.
I'm friendly. This question comes from Garrett Nankolis. By state code, the budget preparation and approval is the responsibility of the city council. As such, have you ever attended one of the many city council, council, city budget workshops? And did you participate in or attend the budget public hearing this year?
Two questions in that one?
Yeah.
So...
Want me to reread it?
No, that's fine. No, I think what I'd like to say about that is I attended as many online programs as we could because of COVID. So did I actually physically go? No, I did not. Have I read numerous documents about how the city budget works? And do I bring experience about how budgets work? Again, I'll reiterate, I run a large budget myself. And so though I've educated myself, talking to Carol Mitchell about how the city budget works, I did not attend any in-person, but I've certainly watched them, I've learned what I could online. So again, meeting with Carol Mitchell, I thought was much more interesting and eventful than watching something online. You certainly learn more that way.
Thank you. Similar situation with me. I have studied the budget quite thoroughly, and I've also been able to go to Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, partly because it's my duty, partly because I'm a zoning and planning nerd, but also I've been able to go to city council meetings as well. And this, it kind of brings up an important point, that a lot of the times that I attend city council meetings, I'm frustrated with the idea that meetings are pushed off to another week. And we have a lot of citizens who want to be engaged, and when they show up to attend a meeting, and it's either not held, or they're not even going to talk about the issue, I understand there's rules behind that, and there's certain things that are out of our control, but we need to make sure that we're getting citizens engaged. And I think the way to do that is to increase the publication of these meetings and events. I hope to talk a lot about the budget tonight. I think that we need to ask a lot of important, different questions when it comes to the budget. Instead of, hey, where can we get more revenue? Let's talk about where we could potentially cut, and let's talk about how we may not need to cut right now, but what happens if a year from now, this booming economy isn't booming anymore? Like, let's say a pandemic arrives, something. We have to make sure that we have the goal and the end in mind.
You know, it's a great question. I have, prior to COVID in the past, attended one or two of the planning and zoning meetings, as well as some city councils. During the COVID, I was able to get the documentation, as we all have access to online. I actually have the urban renewal budgeting in front of me as we sit. I am a financial advisor. Budgeting is what I do. It's what I live for. I've been here twenty-seven years. I want to make sure that we have a firm grasp on what that means. You know, I plan for the what-if on an individual level, for my family and friends, my clients. Now it's broader. It's time to plan and prepare for the what-if on the city level, for the town that I live in that I represent. That's what I bring to the table when it comes to the planning and zoning and budgeting. That's in the back of my mind all day long. Numbers, what's the best with it? The city of Caldwell can be economically prosperous, and at the same time, taking care of my taxpayers and my citizens that I'm trying to represent in seat one. I hope that answers your question. Thank you.
Well, again, as the incumbent, I attend all city council meetings and budget workshops, but I want to point something out, and Councilman Coulson is in the audience, and he can attest to this. Before Mayor Nankolis appointed me to the council in 2009, for about a year, I attended almost every council meeting, and I attended budget workshops. So when I came on council, I knew what I was doing, and I hope all candidates will do the same. Thank you.
This question comes to us from Chuck Stodick. Are you in favor of zero-based budgeting for all city departments? Why or why not?
Thank you for that question. Generally speaking, I would say yes. I'm sure there are circumstances where budgets might have to be changed a little bit. My understanding of zero-based budgeting is not starting out with big numbers that you have been given through revenue, but instead, starting of what are our needs versus what are our wants. And so I think it is a good thing to apply, and I also think it's something that I would advocate for as a member of the city council. Unfortunately, although we have a say in it, we don't have the final say. In planning and zoning, we make a lot of recommendations, and the city council kind of can do what they want with it, right? But in this position, we'd be able to advocate and have a stronger voice. But at the end of the day, that level of changing how the budget process work would have to be collectively engaged together, all members of the city council, the majority, and also with the mayor. But if a mayor comes forward who has that zero-based budgeting practice in mind, I would absolutely encourage it and support it. We have to really ask those important questions of, again, where do we need to cut, and not necessarily, how do we get more revenue? With a lot of people moving in, there's a lot of people who can say, whoa, there's more money coming in. But, and then there's a lot of people who can say there's a lot more costs going out. Well, we can balance growth so that those folks pay for it, pay for the growth itself. Thank you.
A very good question. Zero-based budgeting. He mentioned needs versus wants. Some departments are going to need more than other departments. We've touched on this with our security aspect, first responders. I like zero budget, but at some time, we're going to have to sit down and adjust that budget from year to year, based on our growth in the city of Caldwell. We all know that the city of Caldwell is growing leaps and bounds. We're going to be at an astronomical number here in the next ten years. As we address this every year, we can't be afraid to move and adjust that budget to fit our needs, because we already know, all four of us candidates here have talked about community safety. And we can't get that, or get to where we need to be, without adjusting that budget to fit our needs in at that time. So yes, I'm a fan of it, but I'd like to address it every year, to fit the needs of what we need for our community, for the safety and the growth of our city. And, you know, I hope that is what we're looking for as a community. Thank you very much.
Let me move this, so I don't knock whatever that is over. You know, zero-based budgeting is a nice concept, and I appreciate Chuck's question. He served on council, but I think seat number six. And I have a lot of respect for Mr. Stodick. But keep in mind, our tax base is not like Napa or Meridian's or, you know, Boise. We really have to struggle to pay for what we need. And again, we've all talked about public safety, and that is, I think, all of our number-one concern. But I wish zero-based budgeting was realistic, but I don't think it is. Thank you.
Well, I've had the unique experience of going through zero-based budgeting while working for the state police, and I think it definitely works. I think that there is some opportunity also, that when you need certain things, you just have to do decision units to justify those. I believe that by analyzing the code, Idaho code, which is my experience, and/or ordinances to see what services that the city is to provide by each department, what is required by law to provide. And if you're providing those services, not to say that they may not be needed somewhere else, but if you're providing services at the cost of the taxpayer that are not required by law or by statute, then you don't do those services without some sort of fee, or whoever needs those special services would pay that fee for that. So it simply does reduce the taxpayer's bill by requiring each department to justify the money that they need, and not just continually raising their budget by three percent each year, five percent each year, just saying that that's the status quo, and that's what it needs to be raised by. Well, each year, you need to justify that. So maybe you had salary savings, maybe you don't need as many personnel, or maybe you even need more personnel. The key is, is justifying your expenses and not just simply asking for more money year after year.
This question comes from Ramsey Butros, and it's going to be a long question, so bear with me. Please express your opinion on how you'd like to... Please express your opinion on how you'd like to see Caldwell developed. Tying your vision to the Caldwell 2040 Plan is good, which is a comprehensive plan. But if you're not familiar with the plan, a more general discussion of your vision is still helpful. Please address managing crime, quality of life, managing traffic congestion, public perception of Caldwell as a place to live, and how you will support the element of development. And the final part is managing taxation and the sharing between existing and new residents. And I'll be happy to repeat any of that if you get up here and you can't remember it. Thank you.
That is a fabulous question. I wish I could answer that in the timeframe that I'm allowed. Generally, the growth of Caldwell. Let's start there. My view for the city of Caldwell is, yes, growth at a considerable, moderate pace that we're at. We all want growth. We want businesses to come in. We want to create employment. We want to create jobs, but at what cost? That's one thing that I'll address as time goes on, if elected. Addressing crime, the growth in lifestyle that we have. It would be great to be that smart community where we are walking distance to everything, that our sidewalks and curbs that are well-maintained, that we can walk anywhere. I don't have to, you know, dodge traffic to try to walk down a sidewalk. You know, planning and zoning. This is a very difficult question to answer in a two-minute timeframe, but the growth is for the community, making sure it's right, what best fits. Those individuals that come to the meetings, come to the, and have questions, we'd love to sit down and talk to you about them. Addressing, you know, the financial aspect, what's it going to cost me as the taxpayer versus what's it going to cost the city? Those are all intricate parts of the growth of city of Caldwell. And that's what I want. I want to be able to grow at a very conservative, moderate-conservative level, at the same time, taking care of our community, crime, and a healthy lifestyle that we can educate our community and future citizens of Caldwell. Thank you very much.
One of the topics of my campaign for this year has been controlled growth. I'm very concerned. Now, first of all, I want to be perfectly clear. I'm in favor of personal property rights. I'm not saying that, you know, we should, we should impact that in any way. But we get, during our quasi-judicial hearings, many different projects that come before us. And I have to look at them, those projects, in several ways. Of course, how will it affect the applicant, the developer in this case? If we have citizens from that neighborhood where they're going to be developing, how will that impact them? And then our infrastructure. We've already talked about fire and police, so I won't rehash that. Traffic, I mean, I tried to drive down the boulevard the other day, and it took me 30 minutes to go two blocks. So I'm not sure that this answers the question, but I believe we really need to focus on growth in this city. Thank you.
I think I'll start with growth as well, and I'll just call it responsible growth. I think that there is congestion in the city, and it's great to have a five-year plan going forward. I think sometimes we get so focused on what the five-year plan says that we don't want to change anything or modify anything. So it's okay to renew your five-year plan or reevaluate to see if that's working. We certainly do not want to lose our main corridors through the city. However, growth is going to come. And with growth requires just the proper planning for that. You know, whether it's frontage roads or other access or limited access, depending on what our engineers have to say. But I think the time is now. You plan now for the growth that may occur, and then hopefully, the city can absorb that or change the traffic pattern so that it best serves the city. We've already touched on crime. Again, just, we know that our police and fires, well, we're talking about crime, so our police need to be made whole. And again, they need to be trained in certain areas, not just throwing more police at the problem that isn't going to solve our problem, our issues there. I think the key to all of it, though, is that I don't see much of, though people are, some are saying it, which is great, is you need your citizens' input. I think there are many citizens out there that are, that have made Caldwell what it is, that are untapped, that certainly don't want to be in the public eye. And I think it needs to be more than just the city council meeting is this Monday night. I think that we need to search out or seek out those folks and specifically request them to come, and maybe they don't want to be in front of a city council meeting, but that we meet with them. I think people are willing and able and want to help contribute to the city.
This is a very good question. It's a pretty general question, so I want to be as specific as possible with exactness, because the details really matter. Starting with being, being the city that we are, we have grown so much in the last couple of years, just in the last year, that nobody could have projected the amount of growth that we were going to see. And so the planning and zoning department, the employees there, I think have done a really good job, considering the things that they have had to face, the decisions they've had to, had to face. But there are also some things we need to make sure that we're thinking about. And I graduated law school yet. I'm not a lawyer yet, so if you don't like lawyers, that's okay with me. But one thing they teach you in law school is to, to understand the results. Know that if somebody does this dangerous thing, then an injury could occur. You learn that over and over and over again. So when we approach these issues, we need to make sure that we're keeping all possible futures in mind. What our city, we think, is going to look like in 2040 is probably very different from reality, but we can plan accordingly as much as we can. I know that's general, but it's a difficult question. Another important thing with traffic, I want to say, is that I think the success of our city will be measured on how we interact with other government agencies. And that includes highway districts and the county. There's so many players involved that we have to be proactive, we have to get along, but we also have to be clear in our vision. Thank you very much.
Just wanted to make sure I didn't jump in on somebody. This question comes from Jim Runzold. Are you in favor of impact fees sufficient to cover the city's cost of new growth?
I definitely am. And, you know, if we have a development come in, the developer pays a lot of those impact fees for growth. So I'm going to be very short on this. I'm definitely in favor of impact fees. We act on them all of the time, and city needs that to survive.
Well, I certainly don't think that new development expenses should be passed on to current homeowners. So if it requires impact fees in order to do that, I'm certainly in favor of that. If there's areas in which we can help alleviate some of the impact fees, I'm also in favor of that. I think that new developments are accustomed to that. It's nothing new. They put it in their budget. But we certainly do not want the expenses of new growth for someone else that's developing that area to be passed on to current homeowners. So we're talking about tax relief. If we're going to give tax relief and take it seriously, those expenses cannot be passed on to the current taxpayer. Thanks.
Important question. I was going to mention impact fees in my prior answer and forgot to, so thank you for asking that question. This is a big topic. So impact fees, as I understand it, have not been restructured or discussed very recently, and that's something that has to happen. We have to talk about how we, how we structure those impact fees. But another thing that's fascinating is that when new people come to our city, and it's a good thing, people want to move here. Growth is good if we balance it correctly. And so one of those ways we balance it correctly is to ensure that people are paying, that come in and paying for those additional services. But we also need to talk about sales tax revenue. A lot of increased sales tax revenue has come in with all these people moving in as well. And with the economy booming, new sales tax revenue provides other opportunities to increase growth. And I've been very vocal about the building moratorium, and I don't know if there'll be a question on this, but I was against that because I was worried, very worried about businesses taking that as a sign that we're closed for business. We cannot risk that message. But this comes into play because when we're talking about potentially closing out building for prospective people coming in, we have to have an honest conversation about sales tax revenue, impact fees, and all of the other resources and revenues. But again, I don't want to be the person who says, where's the revenue? Let's get some more. Who do we tax? Someone's got to pay it. Instead, we need to first talk about budgeting and being clear about that. Thank you.
Sitting here, listening to the other candidates and the incumbent, all great answers. I couldn't agree more with everything they've mentioned. Yes, I think impact fees do play a big part in our growth for the city of Caldwell. Yes, I think we need to make sure that it doesn't affect, you know, the average person, the property taxes. I am for businesses, tax breaks. We want to make sure that we, we adjust and we look at it, maybe, you know, reevaluate what we have in place as more and more individuals, companies want to come to this, this town, this city. We want to make sure that the city of Caldwell prospers, but at the same time, we're not taxing our residents that we can't afford to live here. We don't want to become, you know, like the bigger cities, the taxes in their houses, you know? NAPA's property taxes are higher than Meridian's property taxes, Boise's higher. We want to make sure that it is manageable for all our citizens, but at the same time, making sure that the city of Caldwell prospers from new businesses, new development. You know, I'm, like, I can say, being the fourth one answering this question, these candidates answered everything that I would like to have said, and all I can do is reiterate what they've said. Thank you for your time.
We are moving along.
We're not a rebuttal group.
I can see that. This question comes from Lori Radcliffe. Several candidates have indicated that they would reduce the budget for the city of Caldwell. How specifically would you do that?
Well, I'm not so certain that was me, but I'll give it a shot here. It's not about reducing the budget so much as it is making sure that what we're spending is responsible spending. So if there are areas to reduce that, that would be great. I am for reviewing each department's standards and what they have to, what services they have to provide. I am certain, since I have gone through that, and we already talked a little bit about zero-based budgeting, there are areas that we're providing services or spending money in which that can be done in better ways. There's always opportunity, right, for improvement? Always opportunity for improvement. For anything we do, any of us here, there's always opportunity for improvement. So I would say, though, that I have not a specific number to give out in regards to the question. I am in favor of reviewing each department to ensure that the money is being spent where it can best be spent and that we're good stewards of taxpayers' money.
I think that as far as cutting specific things, that's, that's more specific, I think, than, than we might want to be. But what I would say about, about the budget and cutting the budget is that I'm sure that there are areas where we can cut the budget. And I don't want to, don't want to say anything that's maybe frustrates anybody, but maybe there's places with city vehicles we could cut. My car's a 2004, and I, so it's pretty old. They need their vehicles to go around. But another thing that I've thought a lot about is how we make sure that when we're cutting the budget, that we're clear about it and that we have an open conversation with the public. And that's why those budget workshops are important and crucial to continue. What I want to make sure is that when, when people do become frustrated with what parts of the budget has been cut, that they absolutely feel like they have a voice. I want to make sure that our city council is very transparent, and I will make sure to do my part in that. I might not agree with everything everyone says, but I will listen, and that's crucial.
Another great question from our community. Budget cutting. Is it a bad word? Who do we offend first if we try to use the term budget cutting? I don't know if that's something that we can sit down and give a number to. Yes, let's address each and each individual department. Let's be more responsible. Let's see where some of our costs are at that we can maybe hold out on a little bit longer. I don't know about cutting, because with growth, we need income. We've got to find ways to increase our economic value and property of the city of Caldwell. I can't see cutting a budget to a department that we're depleted on for our first, you know, our first responders. That's kind of hard to look at. Where do you want to cut it from? Want to take a look at the city water department? Do we take it? So it's not an easy question to say, yeah, let's cut X, Y, and Z. I think we address each department year in and year out, take a look at costs we have, where we might be able to trim some of the fat, if there's any to trim at all, because there's some departments that we're completely under, in the red, that we need to really shove money to, to get the numbers to where they need to be for our community, for all the things that we've talked about in the questions that we've answered. Budget is a big thing, and it's one of my main resources, one, something that's always in the back of my mind. You know, raising five kids, family of seven, budgeting is something that you've really got to do. And especially if they all want to travel and do things. And we sit down and look at it from meeting to meeting, from year to year. Thank you.
Thank you. I am a man of few words. We work very, very hard every year, and our staff, our finance director and her, and her staff, to trim everything possible. Our budget for this coming '21, '22 year is $107 million. I think, don't hold me to this, but I think $12 million. The reason it's so high is we've got $12 million from ARPA, which is the American Relief Plan Act related to COVID. And that is to basically make up the American Relief Plan Act related to COVID. And that is to basically make up money that we've lost paying overtime to public safety and other people. So, the federal government helped us out with that. But that, you know, that's why the budget is a little higher this year. But I think our staff, I know we on city council, do everything we can to make sure we're spending the taxpayers' money to the best of our ability. Thank you.
Well, we're at that point. If we're going to stay on time, we're going to go to a closing statement. So, I, who's up first? Joe, Mr. Martinez?
My closing statement for tonight is I want to thank the candidates here, everybody that's running for seat one. We all have great intentions for the city of Caldwell, the citizens of Caldwell that provided the questions that we could hopefully answer. I hope that this is a small part of a window that you're looking at each individual, what you may get if this individual's elected in the seat. I can only speak for myself. I will give you the time, the energy. My finger is on the pulse of the community because I'm still in the community. Hundreds and hundreds of people talk to me all the time about what their needs and wants are, because my kids are still in the school districts. My kids are still growing up here. You know, this is just another facet for the citizens of Caldwell to, you know, pick and choose who they want and let their voice be heard. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
I would also like to thank my opponents. I think it's great that we have these three wonderful gentlemen who are interested in serving the citizens of Caldwell. However, I believe I've done a good job in the short time I've been on council and really, you know, for some seats, I haven't been on that long. But I really ask for your vote. I would love to serve you for another four-year term. Thank you.
Well, I certainly, I think this is going to be repetitious, but obviously, we want to thank everyone that's here that's put in the effort for us to come out and have our voices heard. I think it's been great amongst the candidates here and as we develop relationships, learning even more about each other. So, I certainly appreciate that. One thing I just wanted to touch on that seems to be very important is public safety. Public safety, every candidate's talked about it. It's in their top three priorities, and I bring 27 years of public safety to Caldwell. So, yeah, I too would appreciate the vote on November 2nd. And if you have any other questions that weren't answered tonight, you can certainly message me, and I'll get you an answer back or visit the website. But I appreciate everyone's attention, and I am privileged to be here, and I appreciate it.
I love the city of Caldwell. I love what the city has done. I love the potential that we even have moving forward. But I also recognize areas where we can improve, areas of transparency, areas of budgeting, areas of tax revenue, and areas of growth in general. I want to envision the best version possible for Caldwell, and that includes a city where we can live, work, and play here, a city where jobs are created that match and compete against wages in other locations in the Treasure Valley. I'm also grateful for the city employees that work here. It's important to trust in them and the budgeting process and to have an honest conversation with them about those situations. I am absolutely empowered by the details and the levels of these questions that have been asked. These are engaged citizens who care about Caldwell and wants what's best, want what's best for Caldwell. I'd also ask for a little mercy of the candidates. It's not easy to run. It's not easy to get involved. I've been teased. I've been, had things said about me that weren't very nice, but we can rise above that. Nobody here, luckily, it was a great debate. But I want you to know that I really care about Caldwell, and that's why I'm running, to make sure that we're a more pro-business city that ensures public safety and that we keep Caldwell, Caldwell. I'd encourage you to go to my website, brettfriedehoe.com. Thank you and have a great night.
Gentlemen, what a pleasure to have all four of you here. Your decorum was above reproach. Your answers were insightful, and your passion was clear. I wish you all the best and good luck in the race. And I know all of you want the vote. You all want to win, and let the citizens speak. Thank you. Department of Commerce, City Council Forum. This is the candidates for seat two, and we're just going to turn it over to try to stay on track with our timing. We're a little behind. We had a battery change that needed to be done, but we're on our way now.
Good evening. My name is Sean Harmon. I'm a husband. I'm a father. I'm a recent grandfather. I'm a small business owner. I have been a general contractor for 25 years. I've owned my own business for that long. I feel like I bring good experience in knowing how to run a business, and which I think would work very well in helping run a city. I currently serve on the Caldwell Planning and Zoning Commission. I have for the last year. I just want to see Caldwell continue to move in a forward progress and not stop the momentum. I do not want to see the city hang a "Close for Business" sign on it, and I just want to help preserve Caldwell's core values of freedom, faith, and family. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chuck Stodick. Some of you probably recognize my name. I was on the city council from 2015 to 2019, and very good years on the council because we saw a lot of progress here in Caldwell, especially the Indian Creek Plaza project. So, and I've been in Idaho since 1977, U.S. Army veteran, was in the Army from '61 through '64, honorably discharged. My background is I'm retired from the J.R. Simplett Company. I was the Robert McCamber Director. I traveled both in the U.S., Canada, and overseas, looking for areas that we could develop potato production and also french fry plants. Our major customer at that time was McDonald's. So, I've got a lot of experience in dealing with economic development folks, mayors of the various cities, some of the senators and representatives in those states also. And as Mr. Harmon said, we're here to make sure that Caldwell continues to grow in the manner that we like it. We want to make sure that we don't get taxed out of our homes, and we want to make sure that we manage growth properly. And I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Florina. I am, I've been in Caldwell for well over 20 years. I'm a mother. I raised my boys here. My parents are here, and I am passionate about child abuse prevention. I work supporting education in families in an effort to do so. I decided to run because I have been concerned about the growth in Caldwell and making sure that people aren't getting priced out of their homes. I want to make sure that we still have places to enjoy, you know, like the parks and areas out around. I want to make sure that the resources are allocated properly and that we're maintaining our growth, but also looking ahead to the future and planning for the future. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dennis Carlson. I am currently the holder of seat number two. I have worked for the city of Caldwell since 1974. My grandfather immigrated to Caldwell in the early, or the late 1800s. My dad was raised here in Caldwell. My, all of his kids were raised here. My kids, my grandkids are, have been raised here. I have spent a lifetime working for the city of Caldwell. It has been the pleasure of my life, and I really like that. When I was at the fire department for 26 years towards the end of my career, the city of Caldwell was going downhill very fast. I did my share of complaining. Somebody asked me, well, why don't you do something about it? And so, that's when I decided to run for city council. Since that time, I've been on city council four years, then two years, planning and zoning, and now again 16 additional years. So, a total of 20 years. I would like to thank all the other candidates for showing up tonight and expressing their concern and interest for Caldwell. But the most important thing I would like to thank is my wife for sharing me with the city for the last almost 50 years, and I really appreciate and I really love her for it. And she has been one of those people that even when I didn't feel like it, she would say, suck it up, buttercup, let's go. And so, that is my reason, and I am not done yet. So, thank you.
Okay, candidates, I didn't get a chance to tell you, but due to last night, I'm going to be reading the questions from here so people online can hear it. They were having a hard time hearing us. This question comes from Garrett Nankolos. Please explain the difference between the following government funds: governmental fund, special revenue fund, enterprise fund, and contingency fund. And if any of you need refreshing when you get up here, please feel free to ask me. Thank you.
Okay, you've got me on a couple of these, but government funds are usually grants that the city gets for special projects that folks are interested in. Enterprise funds are funds that we receive from the services that the city puts out for our constituents, like sewer, water, those type of things. Contingency funds are those funds that we keep aside for a rainy day. And the other one was?
Governmental fund.
Governmental funds, similar to grants, that we get to improve the city itself. So, okay?
Hi. Well, this is my first venture into politics, but I would agree with him that those are, that's correct, considering he's run before. So, yeah, contingency is like the rainy day fund, the governments, the governmental funds are the grants that, the special grants, and then the entrepreneurial are the ones that help with the utilities.
Thank you. I'm going to take these in the order that I like to talk about. And the first one is enterprise funds. Enterprise funds are those services that are outside, services that, such as your water department and your sewer department. Special revenue funds are going to be revenues that come in from other areas that we have expressed reason to, or a certain subject to do. The government funds are like CDBD grants, where we utilize those from year to year to do certain projects. And what was the?
Enterprise fund.
I did enterprise.
Contingency?
Contingency funds. Those work very closely with like enterprise funds. I'll give an example, the sewer department. We have a fund in that sewer department that continues to grow and continues to grow, so that when the EPA comes in and says, you need to do new improvements, we have the money in the bank, and the people don't have to bond for it. We've had neighboring communities that have had to bond as much as $172 million for their sewer treatment plant. And this keeps us up to date and out of trouble, and it's been a great process that we've used it for. Thank you.
Well, I guess that was pretty laid out, pretty good for me to finish up. Like they said, governmental funds, you know, your grants, your special funds that way through the government. The contingency funds, you know, the savings, the times when the government or when the city would need those extra funds to fund something as an improvement or something. That's an area I think that sometimes can get a little fat, and we should be using those maybe sometimes to help support some other processes that we can. Special revenue funds, same thing, you know, with the grants and different things. The enterprise funds, you know, they do help support the services, you know, the water districts and the sewers. And I mean, it's pretty much just like everybody said. I mean, they all kind of roll the same way. So, thank you.
It was stated that we should hold some of these funds back, especially in the enterprise funds or the special savings funds. And the problem is, is that enterprise funds can only be spent for the enterprise that they are there for. It's like J.C. Penney is wanting to borrow money from Sears to keep afloat, and that, it just doesn't happen. So, enterprise funds have to stay within their own department, and if there is money there that can be loaned, another department can borrow that money, but they have to pay it back. And that's the way that works. So, thank you.
This question comes from Barb Moody. What qualifications do you have for the position you are seeking, and what have you done that gives you merit?
Hi. Thank you for that question, Barbara. I actually have been here a very long time. I raised my children here. My parents are here. I'm very involved in the community, particularly at Zaca Julia Elementary and the Caldwell School District. I like to stay involved because that's where my children are, and I want to make sure that they're staying on the right track. I've worked in nonprofit for a bit, and so, I get to see firsthand how community resources could really help or harm a family, right? And there are really small changes that can be made that really have a big impact on families. And one of those things that isn't so small is growth, right? We want to make sure that families can stay in their homes. We want to make sure that there's houses and other places to live available, right, like a good mixture of housing, to make sure that we have room for families, because this really is a lovely town, and it should be a place where children can grow and thrive.
Thank you for that question. I guess I've lived the dream. 20 years ago, or 22 years ago, when I first ran for city council, I thought I was well-prepared. I found out quickly that I was not really that prepared, simply because doing the job of city council is much, much more complex than anyone can imagine unless they've sat in those seats. But since then, I've got an entire 20 years behind me of experiences, but I've also got 26 more years of behind me of knowing Caldwell's history. But I've also got 26 more years of, behind me of knowing Caldwell's history and how things did not work and how things have worked. So I think I'm highly qualified. So, thank you.
That's a great question. Being a small business owner for 25 years plus, I think government should be ran as a business. I don't, I think that people that are in government should have had to run a business so they know exactly how to do, the, the, take the lumps and the, and the bumps of a business. You know, I'm, I'm passionate for, for making the city go in the right direction. I don't want to see forward momentum stop. You know, I, I want to be a good listener to the firefighters, the police officers, the law enforcement, the first responders. You know, they're crying out, they need stuff and nobody's listening to them. And so I just want to be that person to give an ear and figure out how we can meet and, and get this figured out, you know? So my qualifications are real-life experiences, being in the trenches in small business and, and grinding through that. So, thank you.
I think experience is very important. As I mentioned before, in my prior life, I worked for the Simplot Company and I had a responsibility of over $300 million of not only raw product, but field departments, staff in those field departments, making sure that we deliver the right type of product to all the various plants that the Simplot Company had in the U.S., Canada, and, and overseas also. I spent four years on the city council and I gained a lot of experience from that, learned a lot about government. After I left the council, I was executive director for the Southern Idaho Potato Growers Co-op. And we spent a lot of time at the state level working with senators and House of Representatives, trying to pass bills that would benefit the potato growers relative to contract negotiations. So I think I've got the qualifications and the merit to continue this job that I started back in 2015. Thank you. This next question comes from Chuck Stodak, Stodak, excuse me. What are your views on low-income housing within the city limits?
Well, thank you for that question, Chuck. This, this has been a topic that Chuck and I have talked about several times. Everybody has to have a place to start. You know, there is a lot of factory workers out there that are not making $100,000 a year that would love to have a home. And so they need to have that start. Problem that we've had right now is that growth has grown so fast and the population has grown so fast that so many people are coming in that the property values have raised way high. I don't have an answer for that. That is a market-driven thing. That is not something that the city council can, can control. But I believe that we need to do something to help if it's even in the aspect of federal grants and stuff to assist these lower-income people. But they need to have an opportunity to have that dream of owning their own property and greening the pride. As their life goes on, they will have an opportunity to move up. We don't all stay at $12 an hour. We eventually move up the ladder and, and make a better living and they can, at that time, surrender that house to a, a little better house that fits their needs at that time and opens that house up for another, another couple that is in need of a starter home.
That's a good question, Chuck. I think that we do need a diverse array of housing. We do need those people that are starting, the young kids that are just wanting to get into their first house. We need some programs that maybe help them do that. We also need to encourage businesses to come into this town that pay well. You know, we need to get out in there in the commercial part of it and get some businesses, some manufacturing that pay well and get people going, moving in the right direction. You know, we, we have a labor shortage right now. As a small business owner and a general contractor, I see it every day. You know, we got to get people motivated to work again and we got to figure out how to keep them working and moving forward and making a difference. Thanks.
Ditto on what everybody has said, I believe in low-income housing also. Here about three, four months ago, there was a, a relative of one of the folks that is on the Caldwell Housing Authority that stated that one of the council members was not in favor of low-income housing. And that particular person definitely was, related a conversation that we had on, in one of the council meetings, and that was myself. And the only problem I had with the, what she wanted to do at that time was they wanted a low-income housing project in the middle of another subdivision or close to it that the, the cost of those homes were in the half a million dollar range. And that just doesn't work because it, it, it really decreases the value of that particular subdivision and it doesn't help the low-income side of it also. So I do believe in, in low-income housing. I think it's, were needed in this area, especially with our ag background. A lot of people come in temporarily and a lot of people stay from those jobs too. And I know the farmers out here really need people to work on their farms. They're having one heck of a problem right now keeping good health. And that's where low-income housing comes in. But there is, there is a place for low-income housing that we have to make sure that we strategically plan where that location is so we can build on from there and, and not have the problems that we might have if we, if we just do it head to scalp there and put them anywhere. So, good question.
Yes, it's a great question and I am absolutely for low-income housing. I feel like it's very important that people have a place to live. It is cheaper to keep someone in their home than it is to rehome them after they're homeless. So it's definitely a concern. I feel like when I go out and I've been talking to people and knocking on doors, I hear a lot of complaints about the rising taxes and the rising cost of keeping their home, right? And even if they want to move, they can't afford it because their house has increased in value so much that they can't afford to move into a new home. And so I know that it's definitely a concern for the citizens and for myself as well. I think that we should definitely look at areas like CHA, Caldwell Housing Authority, which should be low-income housing, but it also, the price of the rent there has increased to where people are struggling to either pay that or they've decided like, "Well, I'll just get another apartment," right? Like, "I'm paying this much for a place that isn't that great and I'm only going to pay like a few more hundred dollars for an apartment." But they're barely still getting by, right? And so if we really are truly building low-income housing, then it really should be just that. It should be affordable for families to be able to stay.
This next question comes from Jerem Wagner. Did you or do you support the city-imposed moratorium? Why or why not?
So, I do not support the moratorium. I don't believe, I believe that was a way to just put the brakes on because we got scared. I think we need to look at, I mean, the, none of us want exponential growth, but it's, it's inevitable. So how are we going to deal with that? You know, we stopped letting houses and developments go in, then, you know, that's more tax revenue for the city. So every time we stop that, that's tax revenue we're not getting. So, you know, we have to, we have, it has to be sustainable. We have to really look at it, not just jump. But, you know, we can't just, we can't get scared and start putting moratoriums on it. And, you know, I know everybody doesn't like growth, but I'm 100% property owner rights, you know? And farmers, we need to have ag land, you know? We do need it. But this ag land is getting bought up because farmers are ready to sell. They're not getting bought up because somebody's strong-arming them. So, you know, I mean, that's just, that's the reality of it. So I, I'm, yeah, I'm not, I'm totally against the moratorium.
I'm at the other end of the spectrum. I support the moratorium and I'll give you the reasons why. We had a lack of impact fees at that time. I don't know if you know about impact fees, but those are fees that pay for sidewalks, sewer, curb and gutter. And the existing homeowners were actually paying for that. And the folks that were buying the homes were not paying for it until they moved in and that's just not fair. And we need to, you know, really catch up on impact fees. I think we've done a great job here the last couple of months with, with a consultant service that the city used, but I don't think we're still there. I think NAP is, is the leading city relative to impact fees. They update their impact fees, or will, about every year. When I was on the city council before, I, in my second year, I questioned the, the validity of impact fees to start with and then I also asked the question, "When's the last time that we actually did an investigation into what we charge?" And at that time, really disappointed me is nobody seemed to know. And the retired finance director finally said, "I think it was around eight or 10 years ago." Well, I think statute says we have to do it every five years and with the growth that we have in our city, we need to do it every year because we can't expect the existing homeowners to pay for the newcomers that come into this area for curb, gutter, sidewalk, sewer, and all the other things, streets that need to go in. And they need to pay for that themselves. So it, it was an important thing, but I think we need to go a little bit further and, and, and go back and make sure that we're doing, or we have the right fees on the impact fee structures and make sure that we're not subsidizing the, the new folks that are moving in the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerem, for that question. I think really that the real question is, "How do we address the circumstances that got us here," right? That led to that moratorium. Because we, we as a city, we're in a real bind with some of the stuff that has come down from the state. And so it kind of puts us in a hard spot about whether we are going to, like Chuck said, whether we're going to charge the current homeowners more or whether we're going to, you know, go without some services, which we shouldn't, we shouldn't do. It isn't safe, right? We're already short firefighters. We need to hire more. The fire that happened here last week at Dairy Gold, we had to have people from outside of town come and help. And I know there is talk about needing a truck as well. So these are real problems that we're going to have to, to really take a good look at and work with, in conjunction with the state to figure out how we're going to continue to grow and move forward without putting strain on our current homeowners or some of our services that we need.
Do I support the moratorium? I was one of those that spoke for it. The moratorium was based on a House law that came into effect at the last hour, at our last legislative session, where no communities, no counties, nobody had an opportunity to, to lobby for or against this. The implications of this moratorium was that we could only, or we could only count on 90% of our new growth. And then only if it went up to 8%, anything after 8%, we could not count. Well, these things were devastating to us. This had an impact between urban renewal and the city of Caldwell of almost $2 million. So the decision was, "Let's put a 120-day moratorium on this to find out what we're having to do." The, the, during that time, our, our legal team investigated it and we came up with the avenues that we have to do. By the way, on that night, there was something like two dozen other communities viewing in on that discussion for us, who, many of those other communities followed suit as well because this was a law that was, was challenged, or a challenging law. Since that time, the writers of the law have realized that they had made mistakes and they are looking at working this coming legislature to fix some of the mistakes that they have made during that.
So what I'm hearing from a couple of the candidates is, one, we just want to continue to have more regulations. More regulations, more impact fees. Every time you start increasing impact fees, now you're going to take a building permit that, and I'm just going to throw a number out there, that may cost you $3,000. Is, every time you do an impact fee, it goes up and up and up. And I've seen this in other towns where that started that way and 10 years later, it was a $30,000 permit. So more regulations is not the answer. We have to figure out how we cut fat in the city. We have to, we have to dig deep. This is part of being a business owner. You know, we can't just continue to live off the, the government dole. And you're going to price out developers, you know? And we have a housing shortage. So we put a 120-day moratorium on it? It's 120 days that houses weren't in the process of being built for people to move into. Thank you.
The bill that Mr. Carlson was talking about is HB 389. I'm an advisor on the Canyon County Concerned Citizens Committee, better known as 5C. And we fought that bill up at the legislature, state legislature, for, for many months. And we do have a bill right now that, that was contracted with a couple of folks that we think will be definitely homeowner property tax relief. And Bruce Scoggart of NAPA has that particular bill on his desk right now. And we're hoping that we can get the legislature to change their mind after January 1st because Mr. Moyles, HB 389, is going to hurt a lot of people as far as increased taxes this year.
I just wanted to make one clarifying statement. During that moratorium, this did not slow building down. There were, was something like 1,500 usable lots out there, which still had the ability to build on. The moratorium was based on applications coming in that, that would affect this thing. So it was not a shutdown. It was a slowdown of applications and that was it.
Sean, sorry, somewhere we have to cut it off to move on. I apologize. This question comes from Jim Runzold. What is your plan to preserve open space and farmland? Excellent question. And one of my beefs have been with our local government, especially the county folks, on preserving farmland is they're not doing it. And I know this all comes within our comprehensive plan for both the county and the city. But we're using, you know, really excellent farmland up in a hurry. I mean, it's, it's just multiplying like you wouldn't believe. And there are some plots of land out there that are not good for agriculture. It's pretty simple. And my agriculture background, I can tell you just about where they are. And we need to get people on board that will... And we need to get people on board that will designate those particular areas that, where we shouldn't be using farmland, or using farmland if it's farmland that can't be used for good crop production. So there is a way out of this, but I really have a problem with our local officials. They, they promise you something as far as preserving farmland to get elected, and then when the time comes to, to really carry that promise through, it just doesn't happen. Because look at all the land that's being developed west of here in Wilder and Greenleaf and all those other areas that have good farm ground. But there are, there are some areas where we can develop that, that just doesn't produce a good crop, so it can be done. We just have to work at it.
Thanks, Jim, for your question. I absolutely am passionate about saving open space and farmland. It's so vital to this community. I would also like to make sure that there are enough parks near the subdivisions that are being built within walking distance. I know that I live off KCID, and there's not really a lot of places for the kids to go nearby, like within walking distance. And so I am a big fan of conserving the land and really kind of supporting farmers and having that land. If they don't want to get rid of that land, to have them keep that land. I think that we should take another look at the comprehensive plan. I know that Jerem mentioned yesterday that it's a living, fluid document, and there's, there's no, there's no reason why we can't go back and just look through that and see where it is that we can conserve more open space. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the question. This, this is a difficult question. Farmland. When a farmer decides he's done farming, everyone else has the right to deal with his property, or with their property. Why should they not? Now, I do not like the aspect of us continually going out. I would like to promote us with infill projects, projects that brings the community closer together, doesn't require police and fire to go quite as far out. Open spaces is another topic. In every subdivision that we do, we require pathways, we require open spaces, pathways that should connect to the next subdivision, so that you can go from point A to point B, maybe through three or four different places. Right now, we are working on a pathway that will eventually hook us up clear out to Lake Lowell. It is very close to that point right now. They're at the intersection or at the negotiating table with IDT to be able to cross on 10th Street. Whether that is going to be over top or underneath, that has still to be determined. But pathways are a great thing for people to entertain themselves, to walk, to enjoy life. We've also acquired a bunch of canals from Pioneer Irrigation that Pioneer would not allow us to utilize these. And we are, we will be in the process of utilizing some of these canals with a pathway on one side, and just to expand our pathway system that we have right now. So, thank you.
This is a difficult question, and I'm in a lot of agreement with Mr. Carlson. You know, when a, when a farmer is done after 60 years of farming and the kids don't want to take it over, should the government tell him what he can do with, or with his, you know, with his land, or with what he can't do with it? You know, I'm 100% for property owner rights. I mean, it's spelled out in the Fifth and the Fourteenth Amendment of our Constitution. So let's stick to the Constitution. Do I want to see ag go away? No, I don't. But how do we come in as a government and tell them what they can and can't do? I'm, I'm really scared of the comprehensive plan that's come out with the county. They are taking property owner rights away, and they're picking winners and losers what they're doing. They're picking which land can go and which land can't. Open spaces, 100% with Mr. Carlson. I mean, that's a totally different ballpark. I mean, we should have, all those, these developments and everything should have, we got to keep Caldwell beautiful. I mean, we have to have those places to walk, you know, those parks, as Florina said. We need all that stuff to keep Caldwell family-oriented and tight-knit and together. So it is a difficult question, but it's, it's a tough one, because it can go a lot of different ways. We don't want to see it go away, but we also can't take away those owners' rights either.
This next question comes from Kaylee Schorting, Schorting, or Callie. I'm not sure how it's pronounced, so bear with me, and I apologize if I miss pronouncing it. Domestic violence seems to be a problem in our community. What is your plan to address the issues?
Thank you, Kaylee, for that question. Yeah, I feel like there's a lot that we could do to help address domestic violence. It is certainly something that is prevalent here. I know that, I grew up in a home that, where I saw that firsthand with my parents, and so it's definitely something I'm passionate about. I think that we could definitely give some more support to our local organizations, like Advocates Against Family Violence, and really kind of do outreach with some of, like with the police about working, like what domestic violence looks like, you know, show, talking to people about those, the signs of domestic violence, making a community effort to kind of look out for one another, right? Doing a campaign on what those signs look like. I think we definitely, there are a lot of layers to domestic violence, right? And so we must really take that seriously. I think if someone's charged, we should really follow up on that and, and make sure that they are, you know, that, that everyone in that home is safe. You should feel safe at home, and I think that it's very important that it's addressed. Thank you.
Domestic violence is a very complicated process. It does not have any type of, or any stereotype. It can happen to any classification of person, or people, or families. It is a, a police matter, but being able to recognize it and being able to get help is the key answer. The city of Caldwell has supported Hope's House up here on the hill that is, I don't recall off the top of my head how many apartments they've had, have now for battered women. This is a program that they use, that people come in, that ladies come in there, sometimes with or without children, that this, they have several different programs that they train them through to help them recognize themselves when they're getting involved in a domestic violence process, and how to get their life back together to where they can survive again on their own. I think that supporting places like Hope House and, and making sure our police and fire recognize the symptoms is a very key situation. As I was on the fire department many years ago, there were several cases that I was able to witness that were domestic violence cases. So, thank you.
Domestic violence is a, is a horrible thing. I think we need to really work on with the police and fire, as Mr. Carlson said, and educate, and be able to be aware of what's happening. Offer support as much as we can for the people that are on the other end of that, you know, the victims of it. And just, that's, I mean, that's about it. I mean, we got to offer support. We got to stand behind our police force. We got to give them the education to, to know what to look for and how to, how to help them, where to bring them, you know, who to get them in contact with, counseling, so forth. Thank you.
It is a major problem. I was on the council back in 2015 to 2019, when the Hope House got its initial plan to get going. I think we need to expand the Hope House. There's always government grants to do that. We just have to work hard and get in them. We have to make sure that the information contained in those grants are the type of information that the government will actually give us a grant to expand. I also think that we need to bring the Boise Rescue Mission into this, this scope of planning for these people that need help, because they've been through a lot of these exercises with the people that they have up in Boise and other areas, and I think they'd have a lot of expertise to bring to the table, to help us out as far as getting these folks in the right place. Local churches need to be involved in this also. I know, I go to Grace Student Church here in Caldwell, and we talk about this many, many times with our Department of Christian Education person, when people need help, and I think they need to get involved also. So between those three or four different organizations, I think we, we can do a great job. And again, I really think that priority-wise, we need to get the Hope House expanded, so we can actually accommodate more of these victims. This is our last question for you guys, and then we'll go to closing statements. It comes from Lori Radcliffe. If elected, what three steps would you take to put our city on a firmer, although it is on a firm foundation right now, a firmer foundation, for the increased population and business growth we are experiencing?
Well, Lori, I thank you for that question. But being a member of the city council for over 20 years now, I believe that right now, the city of Caldwell is on a firm platform. We are, we are getting the job done. The, the growth is coming. We are, are working really hard. Some of the projects that we've got going right now is the Smead Parkway. We've also got North Parkway Place. We're working hard right now to open up a new urban renewal district, which would be North Urban Renewal District. This is an area north of town on the other side of the river that has a lot of blight in it. There's residents out there that have jumped with joy, because they believe that that will help improve their district. The, the downtown area, we have projects right now that, where the Saratoga parking lot is right now, that should break ground sometime in December. The, where the machine shop is, there's two lots there. That should break ground in the spring and be ready by the next spring. There's properties across from the, the plaza that are in the plans for, for redeveloping. We have a lot of different redevelopment going. And I know we're losing the Saratoga parking lot, but we also have put in a new parking lot over on the other side of the railroad tracks, that people will now have to walk an extra block to get into the downtown area. So we are very firm, we are very, very strong in where we're at, and I think that we've created some really great plans. Thank you.
If elected, first off, city of Caldwell, the council, they've all done a great job over time in really creating a great downtown area. I do think we need to go out, and I think we need to recruit big, bigger companies to come in with higher-paying jobs for the people. But my biggest thing is that we need to extend downtown. Downtown can't be one little block around Indian Creek Plaza. You know, we need to go two blocks out every direction, encompass businesses that are out there to get the same traffic flow as what's happening in, right in downtown. I mean, I, my idea to that is, is we need to, the town needs to be well-lit, two blocks out. We need to light it up. We need to make people feel safe to park two blocks away and walk into town. I mean, of course, losing the parking with the building going in over here, you know, that's going to be tough, even though the little parking lot that they put on the other side is still not going to be enough for when Christmas hits. So people are going to have to walk. So we should have a well-lit city to where people feel safe walking, you know, two blocks. You know, and let's, that'll bring businesses in to fill those empty spaces in those buildings that are right outside the initial center, and people will walk past them, people will see them. You know, we've had some businesses shut down that were great, that shouldn't have shut down, but nobody walked past them. So, and, and bring new businesses into downtown. You know, we got to, we can't over-regulate them. We can't, you know, we have to, we have to make us business-friendly and not hang a "Close for Business" sign on downtown.
I think we're at a crossroad right now as to how do we continue the good job that the city council and mayor has done already. And the three things that I would concentrate on is, I agree with Mr. Harmon, we need to expand the plaza by at least another couple of blocks. And we have enough parking. I think we can create enough parking, whether it's parking garages or more parking next to the railroad track, as far as evens are concerned. Number two, I think we need to be efficient in our operations. I think that we need to bring a consulting service in to study what the city does, where we can create some more efficiencies, get some good people in there that can carry out the jobs, whether it's, it's not necessarily a reduction of jobs in the city, but just to make sure that our city itself is running efficiently, because that's important, to carry out those projects that we need to have to improve. And also building community. I think that right now, we have too many separate organizations, like we have, you know, the Downtown Folks, Destination Caldwell, we have the Chamber, we have some of these other service groups. I need, I think we, we need to consolidate those groups, so we're all focused on the same plan instead of working separately. Because, again, when I was on the city council, they were separate groups. A lot of them didn't agree with the plans that they had and the goals, and I think we need to consolidate. And I think the, one reason that the person who gets elected for our new mayor, he's going to have to be the leader in that, because that is definitely needed for, to make sure that we improve in the future. And just, just one other thing, I think that as far as building the community with all of these other organizations, you know, if everybody's splintered, it's just not going to work. So that consolidation has to happen. Thank you.
Well, I think that I will definitely bring a fresh and different perspective to city council, and some steps I think that we could take to get a better grasp on the increased population and growth are things like involving the community more in some of the decisions that we make. I know that they give you the ability to come to the city council meetings and speak, but I think that a lot of people don't know exactly how much say they have, when developments are being planned, or how to go about making a statement or coming and, and talking. They're just not comfortable coming, you know, down and, and making a public speech, you know. So talking to them about how they can write a letter, or who the person to talk to is, or where to find that information. I think sometimes it, it feels overwhelming, and so just kind of educating our community and encouraging them to come and be a part of the conversation, I think would be a really big step in the right direction. I also feel like we should renovate other areas outside of the plaza. I think the plaza looks wonderful, but we definitely have some great older neighborhoods that could use things like sidewalks and streetlights up on Canyon Hill. That's a great area, and I think it could use some, you know, some renovations. And then down over by Freeport, I don't know if you've ever been down there, but there are kids out there every morning, walking in the street, because there's not a proper sidewalk out there, and some streetlights would really just help with the safety of that neighborhood. And I know that there's definitely a concern about rising crime, so we want to make sure it's as safe as possible. Thank you.
We're going to go to two closing statements, two minutes, and Sean, you're up.
We're going to go to two closing statements, two minutes, and Sean, you're up first. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you to you guys for having us here. Thank you for all the candidates that showed up tonight. It's great to hear how everybody thinks. I think we all think in the right direction. I think we just have a little bit of a different approach to get there. For one, if I'm elected to City Council, I will be the ears and the voice of the people. And I really want to encourage people to start coming to these City Council meetings. I want to see this place packed because your voice is heard. And in numbers, we have to rally. As City Councilman, as mayor, as city officials, we all, they all work and we all work for the people of this community. You know, it's not just us. I mean, we have to hear your voice. And that's what I really want to encourage. I want to encourage the people of this community to get more involved in what's going on. Second, I think we really need to look at our fire and our police. We cannot have Caldwell as a training ground. I mean, that's what it is right now. People are coming in, they're learning to be a firefighter or a cop, and they're moving on because they're getting better pay, better benefits. So we need to, we need to really encourage and figure out a way with the fire and the first responders and the police to figure out how we can retain people instead of just training them and moving them on. You know, downtown's a great area. We just talked about that. I really am passionate about expanding that out a little bit. Property owner rights, once again, I'm back at that. But I mean, I don't want to see the city, the state, the county, I don't want to see them take away somebody's rights to own a piece of property and do what they want with it. You know, I, I will work hard. I'm a business owner. I've always worked hard all my life. So I will work hard at this too. So thank you.
As I mentioned before, I think one of the main reasons that, that we need to concentrate on is taxes. Our taxes are way too high. Thirteen years ago, I just moved less than a mile from where I used to live in the county, in the city limits over by Sienna Hills. It's actually called Cedar Crossing. And my tax bill at that time was $2,100. It's $4,200 right now. And, you know, a lot of people are suffering. I know I'm, I'm still an ex-official guy on the Caldwell Veterans Memorial Hall, and there's a lot of veterans that are going to be taxed out of their homes. We talk about that all the time. There's a lot of low income folks that are going to be taxed out of their homes. And that's just not right. All the more reason that we need to get together, make sure that HB 389 is defeated, and we come up with a new tax structure that Representative Skog has right now that we can present to the, to the folks up there at the legislature. Urban Renewal Agency, I think we need to dissolve that and get that money back to the taxpayer also. I know that, you know, it takes a lot of money for urban renewal. I think we've done a great job as far as the Sky Ranch project is concerned. But talking with businessmen downtown now, they're saying, why do we need to expand more business now? We have to pay higher wages. We can't get people to work for us. Our costs are going up. So we need to take a second look at that, exactly how much we do want to expand. I think that's a very important part of the keeping the existing structure and the businessmen healthy that we have. The other thing is, I think we need to go to a city type, a city manager type of organization where we have a gentleman that takes care of the day to day operations. And so the mayor can concentrate on the big picture. I think that will help us in the long run, for a long term. Thank you.
I just want to thank you for having us today. It's been very interesting. This is my, again, my first venture into this. But I am very passionate about helping the community. And I really want to make sure that Caldwell stays safe and beautiful and that we continue to head in the right direction. I want to make sure that people who have lived here a long time can stay in their homes if they want to. Or, you know, new families that don't have a lot of income can afford to buy a new house here because it really is a great community, a great place to raise children. I want to make sure that we still have open spaces and parks and farmland. And I can't say enough great things about Caldwell. I really think that a City Council should reflect its population. And I think that having different people on the City Council would be a better representation of the community. So before I leave, I just want to encourage everyone to do their research and please vote. I know that it's, people can be apathetic about politics and voting, but it really does matter, especially in these smaller elections. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate all the candidates that have been here today. Chuck brought up taxes. And I know taxes are getting high. But what has the city done about it? In 2007, our levy rate was at 130. In 2021, today, it's down to 52. So it's gone down almost 80 points. Why has the cost or the price on your property taxes continue to go up? Well, that is multifaceted. And our property taxes, we don't have just the city. We have the county, we have the school districts, we have ambulance districts, and I can't remember all the rest of them off the top of my head. But the school districts chew up a lot of that. And when they continue building new schools, somebody's going to have to pay for it. The county, their taxation is about the same as ours. So with that in mind, Caldwell has worked diligently to get this levy rate down as low as possible. Now, it was also stated that urban renewal will sunset next year. While yes, it will, but it will continue going on for one more year. It sunsets and continues for that final year. So in two years, I expect that there will be another 10 to 15, possibly 20 points off of our levy rate. I want to again, thank everyone. My name is Dennis Carlson. I appreciate your time. I am the current member of the City Council, on seat two, and I would love to continue serving there. Thank you.
Well, on behalf of the chamber, we want to thank you. You've given the citizens of Caldwell something to think about. You've shared your passion and your positions very well. And I wish you all the best of luck in the upcoming four, seat three. And generally, there would be four candidates tonight. There are two. Rob Hopper is not attending because he is at his daughter's wedding. And then Zachary Strong, Mr. Zachary Strong, is a coach and his team started playing at 7:00 PM and he didn't think he would be back in time. So I just wanted to let you know why those two won't be there, won't be here tonight. And they both apologize, given the commitments that they have. We'll get started in just a minute.
Thank you so much for tuning in tonight for this forum. My name is Diana Register, and I am running for Caldwell City Council Seat Number Three. While I am new to politics, I am not new to leadership. For 20 years, I worked as a city employee in various roles, most recently as a 911 dispatcher for the City of Nampa. I will bring a unique perspective to the board and be able to advocate for you and our valuable city employees. Sorry, I ran back from the other room. I am also a Realtor, a small business owner, a bestselling author, and I am president of the IM 149 Public Charity, which grants wishes for pancreatic cancer patients in honor of my husband, who was a Caldwell City Police Officer who succumbed to the disease in 2016. Service has always been important to my family. One of the earliest motivators I had for running for office was when my husband was wearing an expired bulletproof vest to work. I asked him why he didn't have a new one, and his only answer was that there wasn't enough money in the budget. I found that ludicrous, that we were sending our police officers out to protect the community, yet we didn't have enough money to protect them. It amazes me that we are paying some of the highest property taxes in the state, yet our services are struggling so much, especially when the city holds a massive surplus that goes unused. While it is appropriate for the city to be prepared for budget emergencies, it is not appropriate to hold that much of our taxes when they can be reallocated back to the community. We cannot keep asking our city services to do more with less, and that was apparent during the Dairy Gold Fire when our fire department did not have the proper resources they needed. It is vital that we examine that surplus and see where the relief can be given immediately. It is time to let urban renewal sunset and put our tax money to work wisely and where it is needed before we take any more money away from the community. Growth is coming to our city whether we like it or not. We need to be prepared to accommodate that growth while keeping the integrity of Caldwell and its small town charm.
Good evening, City of Caldwell. Thank you for tuning in tonight. My name is John Carter. I'm running for City Council Seat Number Three. The reason I am running tonight, or not running tonight, but campaigning to you tonight, is because I have a dream for the city. My children live here. I've grown up here. I want to see this city continue to grow, prosper, and be what we have now, but 50 years from now. I want more jobs, more opportunity, but I want to keep the small town alive that we all come to know, that we know our neighbors, that we can walk outside and wave and not worry about reprisals from silly things. I have a family, as I've already said. I have three children. They've all gone to school here. They go to Thomas Jefferson. I went to Valley View, graduated in 2000. I've been in this community my entire life. The recent things that have occurred, such as the Dairy Gold Fire, brought to light that our city needs to change in how it's budgeting. I believe that our taxes are getting too high. People are getting taxed out of their home. And these are things that we can change. We, as a community, can come together. You can vote for the right people. And those people can listen to you and do what you want. If I make it into City Council, I will have an open door policy. You'll be able to contact me, however, through Facebook, email, or my cellphone. So please, on November 2nd, remember to vote and vote with your mind and your heart. Thank you.
I apologize for coughing while you were talking. This question comes from Jerem Wagner. Do you support the city utilizing CARES funding from the state to provide immediate tax relief to the citizens of Caldwell? Why or why not? Do you, do you support the city utilizing CARES funding from the state to provide immediate tax relief to the citizens of Caldwell? Why or why not?
I believe the city should use whatever available resources we can. The CARES funding can, could be tricky. But if used right and we manage how we use it right, it could benefit the city. There, there's a lot of opportunity there with using it. It just would depend honestly how many strings are attached and what those strings would entail us to do. If there's not a lot of strings attached, then yes, we should use it. But if they require us to say mask mandate, or we don't get it, then I'm against it. I'm against any mask mandates. Thank you.
I would have to also agree that it's kind of a slippery slope when you're getting funding from someplace else, especially the CARES funding, mostly because we don't want, as a city, for any other governmental outreach to come and tell us what we can or cannot do. I also am not going to support mandatory vaccines for city employees. I believe that if they want them, that the city can pay for them. And we, but I believe, I truly believe that we are going to find ourselves in quite a predicament if we start forcing it and losing staff, especially our emergency services. We don't want that. So I would have to look into that a little bit more to see, like what John said, what strings were attached because I don't want anybody coming in here and telling Caldwell how to be run.
This next question comes from Jim Runzold. Who should the city code enforcement actively require keeping ditch banks weed free? Ditch companies or the homeowners? What he's asking is, okay, okay, thank you.
So I believe he's asking who's responsible for that. You know, I mean, I would guess that it would go back to the ditch, to the, like Pioneer Irrigation or whoever it is that owns the ditch. Although, these are the, these are the things that really get me about like government and stuff like that, is working together. So I mean, I don't see what the problem is really with the homeowner taking care of that as well. But the responsibility of it is whoever's going to be owning the ditch, right? Simply.
So having owned property that is adjacent to Pioneer Irrigation ditch, I do know Pioneer Irrigation doesn't like you on their ditch. So it would, it would have to depend on if you own that part of the ditch or not. If Pioneer Irrigation owns it, then you need to stay off. You have to respect their property rights. But if you own it, it is your responsibility. Thank you.
We're going to move quickly, guys. This question comes from Lori Radcliffe. What do you feel are the top two issues facing the city in the upcoming next four years, or in the upcoming four years?
All I can say is top two. I can think of a few more than that. But I would have to start with taxes, the rising taxes, and what we're going to do about it. Because I own a home in the city. Those taxes are making it difficult to make payments, not just for me, but our elderly population that is on fixed incomes. My next big one would be our emergency services. Police and firefighters need to be funded so they can appropriately cover the city. I know approximately, we are about 22 firemen short. That is something that I would like to see fixed with part of the rainy day fund. I have a plan for that that maybe I can detail later. And those are my top two. I'll stop there. Thank you.
So obviously, as a police officer's widow, everybody knows that I am going to say emergency services is going to be at the top of my list. We're underfunded, we're understaffed. Our response times are going to start slowing down. I happen to know right now that we have five police officers on for 65,000 people. And the community expects better, and we need to give them better. John touched a little bit on the rainy day fund, which is actually a surplus that the city has. It's somewhere around $26 million. And the recommended amount to keep in that surplus is 33% of your city expenses in the worst economic times. So if you're taking the numbers, and I'm not doing math up here, but we have something like $12 million that we can give back right now as a relief to the city. The Dairy Gold Fire was a perfect example of firefighters not having the the apparatuses and equipment that they need to appropriately serve the community. and equipment that they need to appropriately serve the community. And so we need to be able to take from that fund, and we need to be able to give it back to our emergency services and the city as a whole right away. Property taxes are also going to always be a big one. I think that with allowing urban renewal to sunset, I think there's kind of this misnomer that our property taxes are suddenly going to go down. I think your property taxes are going to stay the same even if the rates go down, but all of the money from urban renewal is going to roll over into that tax roll, and hopefully then, we can create a better budget for everybody in the city.
This next question comes from Chuck Stoddick. Assuming you might be the face or one of the faces of the city, if elected, do you have a past criminal record? If so, describe.
Thank you, Chuck. I do not have a criminal record. In fact, I have worked 20, about 20 years in law enforcement. I was a 911 dispatcher for the city of Nampa. I was a 911 dispatcher in, at another agency, and then I worked here at Caldwell Police as a community service officer. So, no, no criminals for me.
I do not have a criminal background. In fact, I can go buy a firearm right now. So that's really my best answer. I worked at the prison for six years before getting a disease forced me to stop, and since then, I've enjoyed a criminal-free lifestyle. Thank you.
This question comes from Jim Runzold. Do you believe federal laws always take precedent over state and local laws? And if not, why not?
I do not believe federal law always takes place precedent over local laws. The supreme law of the land is the Constitution, if we want to go with federal law. That is supreme, supreme, the Constitution. The laws that the federal government creates are not always accurate, and are they the will of the people? The closest government we have here is the sheriff and the county laws. What the sheriff and the county actually pass is probably what is what closer to what we follow. They have the most say, they have the most right to say, they live here. The federal government is clear across the country. Their laws, while are the law of the land, shouldn't always be the most precedent, because they don't fit all of us. Now, that doesn't mean we don't have to follow them. That just means we need to have police and sheriffs that know how to interpret the laws for the region they live in. Thank you.
I believe that the federal government creates guidelines for states to follow, and it goes back to, like, the ditch question about people working together. Idaho is a very conservative state. They have to be able to work with the federal government and to make it so that our citizens and the people that live here are comfortable living here. So do they take precedence? I think a lot of times they do, but they are guidelines, and we need to be able to work with the federal government and our legislatures to make sure that Idaho's represented as well.
This next question also comes from Jerem Wagner, and it is a more technical question, so I'm going to give you a definition, so it's not to just kind of catch you by surprise. Do you favor form-based zoning code or a traditional-based zoning code, and why? A traditional zoning focuses on the type of use allowed on the land, whereby, whereas a form-based zoning focuses on the building form as it relates to the streetscape and adjacent uses. It encourages mixed use, relies on design concepts and patterns intended to preserve the assets and character of the community. Those are the two distinctions between the two. You want me to try it again? The question again is, do you favor form-based zoning code or traditional-based zoning code? Why and why?
Okay, so I'll be honest. It's the first time I've ever heard those two definitions. I appreciate, or the clarification on it. There are things, while I'm running for city council, that I don't know yet, that I'm going to learn, like with any other job. But if I had to choose one, just based on the definition, the second one talked about keeping with the landscaping and the character of the town, correct? And I believe that that is so important, and I think that's kind of part of what scares people about the growth, is that we're going to get so big that we're going to lose our small-town charm and what makes us Caldwell. And so I would have to go with that one, only because I believe in the history here, I believe in the community here, and that's exactly why I want to serve you, so.
I believe that it would have to depend on the location and the desired, desired effect of what we're building. I think both have a place. You're going to want form in places like in downtown. You'll want form, but out past city limits, or not past city limits, but out, on the outside of town, traditional might be more effective. I think it depends on what we're building and the desired effect of the building and the project.
We have another question from Jerem Wagner. What are the differences between being a city council member versus other positions in the city, either staffed or elected?
Well, city council is actually what is in charge of creating ordinances and new laws for our city. None of the other positions that are listed have that ability or right. Everyone is pretty much, it goes from mayor to city council, and mayor and city council work together. So neither one of those two bodies have all the power. There is a split. Now, everyone underneath that is appointed officials. We either have appointed or you're hired. We hire people to do jobs, we appoint others to do a position, but they do not have the power that city council does, as I just stated. We appoint them, we hire them, so they would be under city council.
Right. So I agree with him. Some of the responsibilities of city council do include the fiscal responsibility. It's a quasi-judicial body. They create your city policies. It's a legislative and fiscal body, and the city council works directly for you. When you go to vote somebody into city council, you're giving them your voice, basically, and we need to be able to hear you. And I feel like, this is probably a little off the question, but I feel like we haven't been heard for a long time, and that's another reason why I'm here, running, because I believe the community needs to be heard and taken your concerns and your questions and the things that you like back to the city council. The mayor is obviously a very important position. He's very much a figurehead of the city, and of course, all the appointments throughout the city. I truly believe that all city division heads should be appointed, same as police chief and the fire chief, and I think that that holds a lot of accountability, as opposed to just being able to do your job and, you know, still having your job at the end of the year. If the police chief and fire chief have to be appointed every year, I don't see why every other department head shouldn't be either.
Yeah, I think I should just clarify. My point is, the mayor and city council are appointed officials by the city, by the people watching this, and all the voters in the city. I, hopefully, I'm not coming across that we're just an all-empowered group, because we're not. As I've said before, I'm going to have an open-door policy. I want to hear from my constituents.
Misunderstanding. It's getting late, and I'm probably not being as clear as I should be.
Well, you've only done this three times now.
Just a bit. Okay, one of the other questions talked about the top two priorities. Barbara Moody wants to know what you think are the top priorities, which are obviously in addition to the two you've already stated. So what are the top priorities that you see for the city of Caldwell? Other than the top two? You can include the top two.
Well, I mean, again, I believe that our emergency services need to be our top priority. There is growth coming to this city whether we like it or not. They're coming. It's coming. And we need to be able to keep up with that, whether, you know, police, fire, or any other city services, because when we were looking, when I was looking at the 2040 plan, what I found in there was, it's about projected growth and how to best handle that. And what I found in there is that we spend a lot of time talking about our youth, which is very important, don't get me wrong, but we're looking from 2015 to 2040, a 222% increase in people over 70 years old. And we don't ever talk about that, if the projections are correct, which might even be more than that. But we don't talk about that. We don't talk about our seniors. We don't talk about what, how we're going to keep them active and engaged in the community. We have a very small senior center. So I think when we're talking about the community as a whole, outside of city service, or emergency services, we need to be looking at all of our groups of people and making them all a priority in how they're, we're going to accommodate everybody. Of course, property taxes are a huge thing. I think we pay a ton in property taxes. I wish I had a magic wand and knew how to make them lower, but it's something that I'm passionate about. I don't want to pay the kind of property taxes I do. So those are the kinds of things that I would look, like to look at, and then also looking at that surplus and seeing how we can provide some immediate relief to the city immediately.
So I would say my next two, top two would be growth. In growth, we need to be able to make sure that growth is funding growth, that our impact fees, once we lift the moratorium, are paying for that growth. So it's sustainable, so it's planned, which takes me to my next top one, is city planning. We need to make sure our city is planned outright, that our streets, sewers, electrical lines are all planned out, so growth can happen in an orderly, functioning way. Currently, I know most of Caldwell knows that Eustick and Linden are closed. I don't see how that was well-planned, because that shuts off a major thoroughway to the other side of the state, to Ada County, to just Nampa. And personally, I know it bothers me. I wish those two weren't closed down. But since they are also involved in city planning, I would like the city to put as much pressure on the transportation department to make one of those an exchange, so we would have an on-and-off ramp right there, either on Eustick or Linden. That would be convenient for the middle of Caldwell, because right now, pretty much one end of Caldwell has all the exits. The other end, by Homedale, if you live over there, you're stuck trying to go through the Carter Exchange, which I did that several times today, and I can tell you, that is 20 minutes of your life you do not get back. Thank you.
This question comes from Garrett Nankolis. By state code, the budget preparation and approval is the responsibility of the city council. As such, have you ever attended one of the many city, the council city budget workshops, and did you participate or attend the budget public hearing this year?
Sadly to say, I can, I did not attend those. I've been watching some, I've been attending some of the city council meetings, but I did not make it to any of the budget hearings. It just did not work out with my work schedule and being a single father. It's just hard to get some things in. I have been studying up on it, though, in my free time, so I'm hoping, if I win, I'll have enough knowledge from running my own business and doing a budget there that I can be effective working a city budget. Thank you.
So I was kind of in the same position. As a 911 dispatcher, I worked a lot of night shifts, and so, no, I did not attend any of the meetings, but I did, however, read the budget. And so I read it, printed it, spoke to several department heads about it. I'm still learning about it, and I guess that's the answer to the question. Thanks, Mayor. Putting us on the spot.
My only rebuttal is, as I've said, I have been studying it. I did pull it up. I have been looking at it, and I've been talking to some of the departments that I do know, some of the people I know that understand budgets. So I'm working on it, just, I want the city of Caldwell to know that if I do get in, I will understand how a budget works. Thank you.
We are moving very quickly, and thank you both for that. This question comes from Chuck Stoddick. Are you in favor of zero-based budgeting for all city departments? Why or why not?
I think that zero-based budgeting is a really interesting topic, and I think it's something that can be explored by the city council. It's my understanding that the way that we kind of run the budget right now, the different departments get an increase by percentage, and so, you know, you get 2% or you get 4% or whatever. And really, what it comes down to is what do you need? Like, what do you need and what do you want? That kind of idea, I guess. But I don't think that increasing the budget by just a flat-line percentage works in every division, and going back to police and fire. Because we have to be able to sustain the growth that's coming to Caldwell, we cannot just assign them a number and say, okay, we're going to give you 2% and figure out what you're going to do with it, because somewhere, somebody's going to suffer. Either we're not going to have the equipment we need, they're not going to have the staffing, they're not going to have the pay, the turnover is atrocious. We all know this. Every single city council candidate has addressed that. And so I feel like we need to get to a place where the division heads, or even people within the department, doesn't have to be the division heads, come together in a round table, and we figure out this budget together, and how it's going to best serve their divisions as well as the community.
I would have to say I am in favor of zero-based, zero-budget funding, because I want those department heads to come and justify how much more money they need each year. There needs to be a reason. Otherwise, we get away with runaway taxes, and the next thing you know, our seniors ain't taxed out of their homes because we're just letting the budget go up for no reason. Money doesn't need to be spent just because it's there. If we have a rainy day fund, but everything is funded, I'm for that. That rainy day fund can grow. We can save money. It's okay to do that. What's not okay is to be 20 firefighters short and have a surplus budget in the rainy day fund. We could take, I said I would come back to this, we could take $5 million of that rainy day fund right now, $3 million to the fire department would fund 20 officers for two years and their training. The other $2 million could go to the police department, and it would help solve the retention problem right now. So $5 million out of that 23 leaves us $17 million in that rainy day fund. We have options. There is no reason that we can't explore them and there's no reason for the, to keep raising the budget every year just to spend money. Everything should be justified, from a pencil to a car to cell phones. There's no reason that city council can't take the time to go through item by item and fix the budget so it's not increasing every year. Thank you.
I just want to clarify. I do think that it's important for the different departments to come forward and explain why they, it is that they need the stuff. But I don't, again, don't think it has to be the department heads. You have some very strong leaders within your city employees that can come forward and have these same negotiations, so to speak. One thing I do want to touch on, the rainy day fund, which is the surplus of the budget, I don't believe that that can be used for pay. And the reason why is because it's not sustainable. The money that we have in there can be used as like a one-time thing. So fire department needs a ladder truck, they, that's something that they could do. Cops need a car, that's something they could do. I would also really like to see the police department get collective bargaining. I think that it makes them more invested in their community and in their department and it will help retain some of these officers if they have a say in what their benefits are and what their pay is and all of that kind of stuff, just like the fire department.
First off, I would say I have to agree with collective bargaining. It would help the police. I always like having a say in what I'm getting or what I'm doing. As for my plan for the fire department, the 2 million, or well, 3, but 1 million for training, 2 million for retention for two years. When urban renewal sunsets in 2022, the fire department automatically gets another $2 million right from urban renewal sunsetting. So the sustainability is there. It would just give us the firefighters we need now. And then the sustainability would be there next December. So it is a plan that could work. But also, we need to look at how much we're allocating to the fire department. If we need that many more officers and we don't have them, then we're obviously not paying enough to the budget, to the fire department.
I was trying to look and see if you'd already rebutted and then I was trying to figure it out in my head. Thank you. This question comes from Ramsey Boutros and it's a long question, so bear with me. Please express your opinion on how you'd like to see the city of Caldwell developed. Tying your vision to the Caldwell 2040 plan is good, but if you're not familiar with the plan, a more general discussion of your vision is helpful. Please address managing crime, quality of life, managing traffic congestion, public perception of McCall as a place to live, and how you will support that element of development. And finally, managing taxation and the sharing between existing and new residents. And if you need me to, as you're up here talking, remind you of a...
See, did you just print that one out by itself and you're sleeping on the podium? That would be easier.
Yeah. I will do this. I'll fold it if you guys promise me you won't read the other ones.
Promise I won't.
I trust you guys. If not, I'll know. Here you, here you go. It's there.
Thank you.
Oh, Ramsey. Okay. So I did do some research into the 2040 comprehensive plan. We keep hearing it, so I want to explain it real quick. The intent of the plan was to provide a foundation and framework to promote sound land development, living environment, and prosperous economic climate. So what the plan has done is tried to project the growth and then how the city is going to work with that. It should be a reliable way of predicting the future, is what it was for. It was created in 1977. It's been revised nine times. So in 44 years, we've only revised it nine, nine times. I think we need to revisit this and we need to look at it because I don't think that when they originally wrote it, or even the revisions, could even predict what we're about to go through as far as the growth is concerned. As far as managing crime, I think we've touched on that. Obviously, we need more police officers. Obviously, they need more equipment. The quality of life, I think that Caldwell's doing a really good job of that right now with the Indian Creek, with the restaurants, with the Christmas lights, everything that invites people to Caldwell. I think we're doing a really good job of that. But that's where, I also got the percentage on our 70 and older population with that 222% increase. That's going to be very important and that we need to plan for. So we're planning for developments, we're planning for growth, but we need to be planning for those kinds of things too. The public perception of Caldwell as a place to live, you know, I think it's getting better and better and better. I know we've had some crime recently that's hit the news, but I still think that the perception is getting better. Otherwise, we wouldn't be having all of this growth. I did notice in the 2040 plan that one of the high priorities that they had was enhancing the landscaping, while one of the lower priorities was having, encouraging businesses to cater to students. And I thought that was kind of weird, so there we go.
Well, I've lived here my whole life and I can tell you from the 90s to early 2000s to now, Caldwell has grown and it's gotten prettier. Just straight truthful prettier. Downtown was never like this. For the older people who are watching right now, you know what I'm talking about. Caldwell is known as, lack of a better term, the armpit of Canyon County. It really was. In fact, it had some very unflattering names when I was a kid. And now, people come here. Now we're competing with downtown Nampa. In fact, we are surpassing downtown Nampa. And we're competing with Boise. People come here for our events. We look good. We look sharp. Indian Creek has come a long way. Urban renewal has done a good job. I'm glad that it happened and I'm glad that that tool is sunsetting next year. Managing crime, well, we will have to continue to add officers per capita so we can keep up with that. The same with fire department, we'll need to be, add those officers per capita. So we don't have five people on staff like we do tonight for a town of 67,000. We need more. Quality of life. We, downtown is, is our quality of life. It has increased, it's better. We have other projects going on. There's walkways that connect downtown pretty much to Lake Lowell. I think Caldwell is going to look great in a few more years, as long as we have a proper city council in there to manage the growth. I plan on supporting Caldwell as a place to live and that element...
The other thing on here, what I was actually talking about real quick was some of the low and high priorities of the 2040 plan. The other thing that at some point, somebody must have suggested was having a public arts artwork on Indian Creek. And that came in as a low priority, which I would actually like to see as a high priority, especially with some of the graffiti problems that we're having. Have a place for people to do their artwork that's not going to cause damage to residences or businesses or something to that effect. Managing the taxation and sharing between existing and new residents, I think that's good and getting into that HB 389. And I think that's a very confusing tax bill that I don't think the people who wrote it really even understand it either. So we're hoping to see that changed.
I think a public place for people to do their artwork is a good idea. I don't know that Indian Creek is the right place. There will be plenty of walls and whatnot on this walk path out to Lake Lowell that we could designate as a, as a public art space. That way you have something nice to look at while you're taking a walk. The taxation problem, HB 389, I know I'm not the first one to bring this up. It is a horrible tax bill and it needs to be taken back to the legislature, shot down, and something better needs to be presented for the people of Idaho and especially the people of Caldwell.
Thank you both for your honesty and abiding by the rules.
Thanks for letting us have a chitchat.
This question comes from Jim Runzold. Are you in favor of impact fees sufficient to cover the city's cost of new growth? Why or why not?
That is a great question. Yes, I am in favor of impact fees that cover growth. Growth should fund growth. I've been attending a lot of in-person meetings and I've listened to a lot of very wise people who've talked about this. And the only way you can have sustainable growth is if that new growth is helping fund itself. These developers need to be responsible for what they're building. The people coming in need to be, help be responsible for the community they want to be a part of. You don't just get to come in, build a new house and enjoy the water sewer and electrical, the downtown district without having paid back the city and the people who live here in impact fees. That should go, they'll go to the developer, but we all know how that's going to trickle down. So let's not kid ourselves. It's going to come out to the home, new homeowners. But unfortunately, that's how growth is. Nothing comes for free. So, thank you.
I also agree with impact fees for developers and new subdivisions. A couple of things about that. I've heard that our impact fees are rather low here in the city and that they're not always used. Now, don't quote me on that, that's just what I heard. I have not been to a meeting. However, what I would like to make, to see and to make sure that somebody visits with that community to make sure that we're charging enough in our impact fees. And I've also seen, I looked for Caldwell's schedule, I didn't find it. I did find Nampa's and I don't see the problem in emulating a city's schedule or policy that's working. And it seems to be working there. So that goes back to kind of working together with different agencies and that kind of stuff. But yes, I think impact or fees are important. Otherwise, we're going to have to spread out those fees to other homeowners and I just don't think that that's the right thing to do either.
Well, there are some nasty rumors out there that I've found that impact fees in Caldwell are paid back to the developer over time. And if that is actually occurring, when I get in city council, I will dig into it, I will look into it and make sure that that practice is not happening and that those impact fees are being used for the growth that they're supposed to be and not being funneled back to the developer just because they want to build here. The city of Caldwell is nice enough, people want to come here now. We don't need to bribe builders to come back.
I did forget just one point. I believe the state statute on impact fees says that it has to be revisited every five years. And I do believe that because of the amount of growth that's coming here, that we need to be looking at that at least annually to make sure that we're on track.
You guys are on the final stretch. Couple more questions. This comes from Lori Radcliffe. Several candidates have indicated that they would reduce the budget for the city of Caldwell. How specifically would you do that if you favor doing that?
To be perfectly honest with you, I don't see how the budget can be reduced. Are there places where maybe we can make cuts? That's very possible. I don't, I don't sit on city council. Like I said, I read the budget, but those are the kind of conversations, I should have gone to the budget meetings. I mean, let's, you know, let's be real. But those are the kinds of conversations that we have to have there. However, I'm not a big proponent of cutting the budget. I don't see where we can take it away from at this point.
Thank you. Great question. I think this comes back around to zero budgeting. There's no reason for our budget to just go up year for year without actually paying for things. I understand there's some things that have to go up, like city workers want raises. That stuff is understandable. That stuff should be accounted for, but that's not part of the actual zero budgeting. Zero budgeting will deal with, do we really need to buy two new cars this year for the police department if they don't need them? That sort of deal. I think that keeping our budget low, because I know this next year it's going up approximately 19 million, and that needs to be looked at. Why is the city budget going up 19 million this next year? What increases? Where as a city can we go through and tighten our belts? I run a small business, as I've said before. I know money is not an infinite resource. Just because it's coming from the taxpayer and it feels like an infinite resource doesn't make it true. Because our taxpayers don't want to keep giving us that money and I'm also one of those taxpayers and I don't want to keep giving that money. Thank you.
It looks like this may be our last question before closing statements. We may get one more in, depending on how you guys are doing, but you're rocking it. Thank you for keeping it moving. This last question comes from Garrett Nankolis. Please explain the difference between the following government funds. Governmental fund, special revenues fund, enterprise fund, and contingency fund.
Great question. Contingency funds are for emergency funds and to help back up projects that could possibly, city projects that could run over budget, that need just a little bit to finish. Government funds are grants from the federal government. Specials are the grants with, that have a purpose, such as building a graffiti wall along a walk. And then enterprise are for sewer, water, and helping with city growth. Thank you.
So I didn't get a chance to write them all down.
I'll walk you through them. First one's governmental fund.
Okay. I'm going to be perfectly honest here. These are the things that I'm still learning. I'm not a law student. I can probably wager a pretty good guess, but I also don't want to stand up here and give you an answer that I'm not solid in or don't believe in. I'm not going to lie to you. So I'm going to, I'm going to, it's like a game show. Government funds are going to be the funds that the government uses, is my best guess.
Okay. Special revenue fund.
I don't know. Sorry.
That's fine. Enterprise fund?
Enterprise funds I do know are where the city sells goods or services and gets money back that way, like our swimming pool or something to that effect.
And the last one is contingency fund.
Or emergency, which we have plenty of.
We very well may get two more out of here. The, we're getting you your entire 55 minutes. I was going to say seconds, but... This comes from Barbara Moody. What qualifications do you have for the position you are seeking and what have you done that gives you merit?
I pretty much addressed this in my opening statement. After working relatively 20 years as a city employee, I think that gives, I think that gives me a lot of experience because it does bring a unique perspective to the board from the other side of things and it gives people a voice. And I think for too long that our city employees and even our community have not had a voice and that... a voice, and that, that is something that I want to bring to the, to the board. I had created a public charity after my husband passed away from pancreatic cancer. Many of you know that he was a police officer here in Caldwell. I didn't know how to do that. I didn't know how to file the tax thing. You can go back on my Facebook and you'll see me asking over and over and over again for probably about six months for help, and then I finally figured it out. We were able to raise $30,000 in one year, and I started with $5. I am a seven-time bestselling published author, and, you know, experiences, life experience versus, you know, experience on the job, obviously. But right now, we have six City Council members with 58 years of combined experience, and the city is, is, it needs to move forward. It's time. It's time to move forward. It's time to have a fresh perspective. It's time to get people on the City Council that can keep up with this growth and that want to be here. And even with all that experience, we're still having problems. So I think it's time to start some new phases on there.
So my qualifications and merit. Well, I'm a dialysis patient, and I've worked a lot in the dialysis community, helping design flyers, education material, emergency response plans. In fact, here in Canyon County, about eight years ago, I was attending one of my dialysis groups, and it was, had to do with emergency plans in your area. Well, it got me curious. So I then contacted Southwest District Health and found out they did not have a dialysis plan for all those patients that are in the area, which are several. So I worked closely with them for a few months and helped them create a plan that would either provide support to the dialysis centers in, in the form of water trucks, emergency power, or busing anyone that couldn't get out of the area on their own to one of the nearby clinics. I also have a small business. I have employees under me. I work in the community in my small business. It's here in Caldwell mostly, but all over, really. And I know how to talk to people. I know how to listen to people. Those are what I'm going to bring to City Council. I'm in the community, my age, the fact that I'm well-invested in the community because of my children and having grown up here. I want to see Caldwell grow and prosper. I want to see that any new urban development plans we have are 50-year plans. So there's something for my children's children. I want this city to be better than what I leave it. Thank you.
We're going to do closing statements right, excuse me, I'm sorry to the people online. We're going to do closing statements, and John, you get to go first this time?
Yep.
Thank you.
Well, first off, thank you for everyone in the room for being here and helping. Jerry, thank you. Ashley, our cameraman, who's been working very hard. And I'm not sure who that gentleman is back there, but he's quiet.
He's our IT guy.
He's the IT guy. So thank you for all of you being here. And then next, my opponent, thank you for showing up. Appreciate it. And then everyone at home listening that's going to hear this in the days to come, thank you for taking the time to invest yourself in the city enough to learn about who's running. I realize that two of the people on the ballot couldn't make it tonight, and that's unfortunate. So one of them is an unknown, and one of them has been on the City Council for some time now. You've heard from two people now that are, want, have a vision. So go out there and vote November 2nd for who you think is going to do the best job for the city. I hope it's me, but please, get out there and do your civic duty. Thank you.
I also want to thank everybody for, well, the chamber for hosting, and then of course, everybody for tuning in. I know it's late, I know, you've seen this six times. But I really do appreciate it, and for being patient with us. You know, like I said, I'm new at this. I'm a quick learner. I can't wait to get started. I have a passion and commitment to this community. I didn't talk about it before, but I've also raised my children here, and of course, my heart belongs at the police department where my husband worked, and with fire services and emergency services and city as a whole. I do believe that with the departure of Mayor Nankolis, Caldwell is looking at significant changes in how the city is run. And I just believe that it's time to put it together as City Council that's ready and willing to make changes that benefit all of us while holding on to the values that already make us great. I do believe that I'm the right person to join that team. I truly hope that you believe that as well. I am asking for your confidence. I'm asking for your voice, and I'm asking for your vote. You can find me on Facebook at Diana Register for Caldwell City Council, and I, again, really appreciate you taking the time to listen to all of us speak.
Well, this concludes our candidate forums. The two of you, I just want to say, what a pleasure it's been to be here with you tonight. The way you two encouraged each other and rooted for one another was just outstanding, and that's what leadership should be all about. So thank you for that. And for the citizens, make sure you get out and vote on November 2nd or earlier, and vote your conscience, your heart, and for those that you know will run this city the way you want it to be run. Thank you very much.